Main Standing for the homeless homeless.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party's presidency, one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, my, please call.
I hear. Bolen, Councilwoman Romatney.
Here.
Councilwoman Janbergers. Member Becker.
Here.
Councilmember Hendricks.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Here.
Councilwoman Rompler. Mayor Millau.
Here. And we're going to do recognition appointment, then we're going to start presenting to Bloomington Department Police Officers' Commission Certificate to Kevin Steck, Corey Voight, and Robert Hillier, completion of their probationary period as requested by the police department. And I ask Chief Simington to present this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for this opportunity. Okay, um, Robert Hillier, Chance, please first. Today I will recognize three officers who were received commission after completing 15 weeks of police academy here in Illinois, as well as passing the Illinois Law Enforcement Training and Standards Board test, and approximately 18 weeks of in-house and field training. I'll start with Chance Hillier, was hired by the Bloomington Police Department on April 18th, 2022, currently engaged to Aaron Francisco. He has a rescue dog from call for service name, who's. Chance worked as a sales representative for Cairo Wellness Center. He graduated from Mary School in Illinois Wesleyan University. Chance enjoys going to the gym, time with his fiance and dog. He is an active officer who has received a letter of commendation during his time in service. Next is Kevin Steck. Officer Kevin Steck, completed May 16th, 2022. Kevin has been married to his beautiful wife Emily of 13 years. She is also here. They have been blessed with a daughter, Dantry, sons Carter and Matthew. Kevin worked as a special education in English as a second language teacher for 10 years in the Chicagoland area before joining Bloomington Police Department. He obtained his bachelor's degree from Bethel University in St. Paul, Minnesota, and also a master's degree in Concordia University in Chicago for teaching special education, as well as a second master's degree from North Park University in Chicago for educational leadership from North Park University, for educational leadership and administration. He previously volunteered with several homeless shelters in Minneapolis, Minnesota, and at the East Central Regional Juvenile Detention Center there in Lino Lakes, Minnesota. While at the Macon County Law Enforcement Training Center received his basic training, he received the Commander's Choice Award. This award is used to recognize one recruit from each academy class for having shown outstanding overall achievement in the categories of academics, firearms, physical fitness, and most notably, leadership. Present you with your commission. Next, who's? Corey was hired by the Bloomington Police Department August 29th of 2022, is married to his wife, Cressy, and they are expecting a baby boy. Corey previously worked with the Mount Vernon Illinois Police Department for approximately three years. Corey graduated from Ridgeview High School in Colfax, Illinois, and then attended McMurray College in Jacksonville, where he received a double major in criminal justice and homeland security. Corey's hobbies consist of watching sporting events, primarily baseball. I hope he's a Cubs fan. With his family, and fishing, as well as going to the gun range and grilling. Corey and his wife enjoy watching movies together and going on walls. Corey, I will present you with your commission. Congratulations.
Okay, congratulations to all three of you. Public safety is a cornerstone of any prosperous community, and we're definitely thankful to you for committing to our community in this way, and also thankful to your families and baby the cup, I think, one? For also committing, because when you make this commitment, it's not just you and your family, so we really appreciate it. Thank you very much. And we are going to move on to item B, a presentation of the Illinois Law Enforcement Accreditation Program accreditation plaque to Bloomington Police City Department as requested by the police department, and Chief Simington is going to introduce the speaker.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, we're joined by Chief Dan Ryan. He will present the Bloomington Police Department with the Illinois Law Enforcement Accreditation Program Plaque. Chief Ryan started his law enforcement path in 1995 as an auxiliary deputy at Sagamon County Sheriff's Department. He was hired in 1997 as assistant coordinator of the Police Training with Law Enforcement Advisory Commission. In 1998, he took over the duties at the PTC as the coordinator, where he still serves today. In the winter of 1998, Chief Ryan was selected as a part-time police officer with the Leland Grove Police Department, and in February 1999, he was promoted to a full-time status. Chief Ryan has risen through the ranks at that police department, and he is currently the chief. He is a member of the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police for many years, and has served as the education committee, as well as the training committee chairperson. I will have him come up and read and present. Thank you.
I'll have to make that resume, right? Thank you very much. The three officers that just got sworn in officially, thank you for your service, because in today's world, this is what we need. We need you guys. So, thank you very much, and thank you for your support. And also, thank you for your time to let me come in for everybody else, and so to be respectful of all your time, all right? I don't really want to read this, but this is such an important step that it really deserves all this being read. So, bear with me for just a minute, but what they've done here is Bloomington Police Department's being reaccredited through the ILEAP program. So, again, my name's Dan Ryan. I'm with the Leland Grove Police Department's Chief. I'm the third vice president of the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police. Early in the 21st century, the Illinois Chiefs sought a way to help local departments demonstrate and that they achieve the highest standards of policies procedures. This led us, the Illinois Law Enforcement, I'm sorry, the Illinois Association Chiefs of Police, to create the Illinois Law Enforcement Accreditation Program, or ILEAP. For ILEAP, we partnered with several major organizations in Illinois, such as the Illinois City and County Management Association, the Illinois Criminal Justice Authority, Northwestern University for Center of Public Safety, the Intergovernmental Risk Management Association, and the Illinois Law Enforcement Training and Standards Board, as the others who are all part of this ILEAP Accreditation Council. This is Illinois's accreditation authority for the state of Illinois. Today, I'm here to congratulate Bloomington Police Department on their ILEAP reaccreditation. All departments must undergo reaccreditation every four years to ensure departments are in compliance with current standards and best practices. As many of you know, our laws constantly change, and law enforcement profession continues to evolve along with the policies, procedures, and best practices. Bloomington Police Department was originally accredited in 2019, so this is their first reaccreditation. It is important for us as a statewide association to publicly recognize departments that are doing well and that they embrace the best practices. ILEAP was a program designed to be an administrative bulletproof vest type of program. This administrative armor was designed to reduce the risk and liability, serving as a catalyst to professionalize the industry and soften the blow of lawsuits should one be filed, despite current best practices being followed. The Illinois Law Enforcement Accreditation Program aims to make police organizations better by evaluating policy and procedures against established criteria. Coupling the alignment of policy and written directives against best practices is the process of having those criteria certified by an independent authoritative body, or the ILEAP Accreditation Council. This accreditation is significant for your police department, for your university and campus, for your community, and for all of us in Illinois who are pushing for higher levels of police professionalism. Bloomington PD has achieved Tier One, which means they have met or exceeded 69 important standards. We review your policies and procedures in the context of these standards. We look at four areas: administration, training, operations, and personnel. We brought in professional assessors to look at such critical policies as use of force, pursuit, record-keeping, and community protection. To achieve accreditation, or in this case, reaccreditation, it's a rigorous process, taking many, many months, for a department to demonstrate its compliance with the standards. So, congratulations to Chief Jamal Simington and his staff on this accomplishment. Only 61 Illinois agencies in the state have achieved ILEAP accreditation since the program was launched more than 12 years ago. That's about 5% of the entire police departments in the state. So, you can be sure you have a professional department that's up to date with policies and procedures. The Illinois Chiefs are very proud of Chief Simington and Bloomington Police Department for this accomplishment, and we believe that you guys all should be as well. Chief? On behalf of the Illinois Association Chiefs of Police, this reads, "This Accreditation Council verifies that Bloomington Police Department has policies, procedures, and daily routines that achieve the Tier One level of Illinois accreditation. This signifies that the department is in compliance with professional standards of modern law enforcement. Reaccredited January 12th, 2024, accredited since 2019." Chief, congratulations.
I wasn't sure if you wanted to say a few words, or don't want to put you on the spot, but this is quite, it's quite the achievement. I mean, 5% amongst the 5% in the whole city of Illinois, that's amazing.
Yes, Mayor, thank you for the opportunity. Certainly, it's an honor and a privilege, and I say that quite often, to serve as your chief of police, and also, the men and women that serve, serve with a tremendous amount of courage and dedication to this profession. We try to get it right each and every time. The community is the benefactor, and we all understand it is quite an honor and a privilege to serve. I do want to give a highlight to Lieutenant James Clessen. Lieutenant Clessen is the accreditation manager. He had a tremendous amount of work, many hours of work, to provide all of the standards, the proofs, to the assessment team, and many others in the department played a key role into during the process, which allowed us to achieve this accomplishment. So, thank you for your support, as always, and we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So, the council meeting is complete without a bunch of orderances to be read, so we're going to move on to a proclamation for Community Development Week 2024, as requested by the Administration Department. So, Melissa, I'm going to read this proclamation, and then I'll give you a chance to say a few words. I'm assuming that you'd like to say a few words. Awesome. Whereas the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development implemented the Community Development Block Rent CDBG program in 1974 for the purpose of providing local governments with the financial resources to assist low and moderate income persons. And whereas the city of Bloomington has utilized CDBG funds for 50 years to provide funding to principally benefit low to moderate income community members, and whereas the CDBG program has made a significant impact on our community through the preservation of affordable housing, public infrastructure improvement investments, funding of critical social services, public park improvements, and upgrades to public facilities. And whereas the city of Bloomington has demonstrated for 50 years a commitment to improving our community through the CDBG program, and whereas the Economic and Community Development Department has demonstrated the capacity to administer the CDBG program to identify, prioritize, and help resolve pressing problems. And whereas the city of Bloomington residents can and are encouraged to participate in the public input process of the 2025 to 2029 CDBG Consolidated Plan between April and August. Now, therefore, I, Mokomalambwe, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, on behalf of the Bloomington City Council, do hereby proclaim April 1st through the 5th of 2024 as Community Development Week in Bloomington, and urge residents to join in recognizing the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and the Community Development Block Rent Program. Thank you. And now, it's all to you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just wanted to highlight what an amazing grants team we have in the Economic and Community Development Department, and highlight some of the things we've been able to accomplish over the last few years. In program year 2022, we were able to invest over $300,000 to preserve affordable housing with nine housing rehabilitation projects completed. We were able to demolish and abandon property. We were able to spend over $139,000 on public facility and infrastructure improvements, including a sidewalk improvement project completed on the west side. We invested almost $50,000 for job training, fair housing, and community planning activities, and about $74,000 to six local nonprofits for public services. In program year 2024, it will be the 50th year that the city of Bloomington has been managing and implementing CDBG programs. For the first three years of the 2020 to 2024 Consolidated Plan, we've invested over 1.5 million in our community to meet the needs of low to moderate income community members. Over 10,000 community members have been served with the funds in the first three years of the consolidated plan that we are currently in. We are encouraging everyone to please participate in the planning of the 2025 through 2029 Consolidated Plan. The resident survey will go live on April 2nd. We are avoiding a particular holiday on the 1st, so we figured it would be good to start on the 2nd. So, that will go live on the 2nd. We will be announcing, in partnership with the Town of Normal, as well as with the McLean County Regional Planning Commission, different events that we will be holding throughout this participation process. And people can submit surveys online, they can submit them in paper. We'll have them available in our office and in other various communities. So, please encourage everyone you know to complete that, because obviously, the more input we get, the more we can help everyone and make sure that everyone is included in the process. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Picture, anyone? Is anybody taking a picture? Otherwise, it didn't happen. Okay. Item, proclamation, World Autism Awareness Day, as requested by the Human Resources Department. And I believe we have. Okay, whereas autism spectrum disorder affects about 36. Over 5 million Americans live with autism today. It is a developmental disability caused by differences in people with ASD may be able to communicate and interact in ways that are different from most other people. Whereas the United States pledged April as Autism Awareness Month, and the United Nations sanctioned War Day on April 2nd. Whereas the city of Bloomington recognizes the importance of autism awareness and acceptance, demonstrates promoting diversity and inclusion for all. Whereas on April 2nd, 2024, World Autism Awareness Day will commence in Bloomington. Now, therefore, I, Mokomalambwe, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, on behalf of the Bloomington City Council, do hereby proclaim 2nd, 2024, Autism Awareness Day, City of Bloomington, and urge residents to join in recognizing World Autism Awareness Day. Do you want to say a few words?
Just thank you for the continued support.
Thank you. Short and sweet.
I'm not going to let her get off the table. Lindsay, do me a favor, and just share with the community, just some of the things that the organization is doing. You really are on that point on all of that.
So, for the last year, we have implemented some training, autism in the workplace, and not just autism in anyone with sensory, you know, sensory issues, and more for neurodiversity. And we're, as an organization, we are certified, and we also did first responder training, so police and fire has also gone on board with training, and they have sensitive bags and quiet areas and things in their department and their vehicles.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you for doing that. Amazing kind of work, so that's fantastic. Really appreciate it. Would you like to come up for the obligatory picture with the mayor? Okay, the next item is recognition of board and commission appointments as requested by the Administration Department. Do we have that? Usually comes up on the screen. Yes, please.
We have Crystal Bricker for the Cultural Commission, and Justin Tyrone for the Japanese Sister City Committee.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Let's clap for Crystal and Justin. And I believe Crystal is here. Okay, there you go. All right, awesome. Thank you. Thank you so much, Crystal. Really appreciate your service. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to move on to public comment, right? Okay, do we have public comment?
Yes, we have two registered speaking person, but we did not receive any email public comment.
Okay, thank you. Public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It is also an opportunity for the city council to listen and hear diverse points of view. To maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of our views, speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record, but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes, and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time seized.
First up, we have Karen Cantala.
Hello, I'm Karen Cantala, and I am here tonight to ask the council to please reconsider the location of the homeless camp on Eastview property, right next to Home Sweet Home Ministries, and I'm just going to tell you, I'm just going to go into the explanation. At 3:00 AM, I got a knock on the door from two people. I opened the door, and it was a man and a woman. The man asked me for money. He did not say please, he said, "I need money. I need money to get my car. My car has been towed, and I need $45 to get my car, to pay for my car. Can I please borrow the money?" I was shocked. That was very bold, especially so early in the morning, and I said, "No, I'm sorry. I cannot help you." And for five seconds, he glared at me. We had a five-second standoff. I wasn't sure what he was going to do. I was glad my dog was barking. I had her there, and my husband was within a couple, like 10 feet. He finally gave up, and they both left. And I can tell you, I felt very threatened and intimidated in my own home on Saturday morning. The lady that was with him had a Hux bag, that our house is a straight shot from the homeless camp to Hux to our property. So, I'm pretty sure that they came from the homeless camp. So, public safety. I have talked to all of you and emailed you quite a bit about public safety and the homeless camp. So, I'm just giving you a personal example of what I have experienced. I have another neighbor, or another person in the ward, who can no longer conduct business at his property because there are people wandering from the homeless camp. They're drunk, they are high on drugs, or both, wandering onto his property to the point where he can no longer have clients there. Hux, the convenience store, I will no longer go in there because there's drug sales going on right outside the door. And as I emailed all of you, they no longer sell the Bic wand lighters because they are, I guess, as the management told us, people are coming in and they're cooking their drugs right on the side of the building, which I witnessed many people acting irrationally. So, I am going to ask the council to use reasonable judgment. That area has residential properties, parks, the library is right up the street. Please use reasonable judgment and relocate that homeless camp. I'm not asking for services to stop. I am asking for you to consider moving it to a place that's more appropriate, away from residential property, away from children, our children, myself, my safety, my family, my neighbor, who I believe this gentleman went next door to my 94-year-old neighbor and probably asked her for money too, and he was intimidating. That's my emotional part. My dad told me, use the legal part. This camp is not legal by your definition of the code. There is no permanent water source. That is a violation of the camping.
Okay, sorry, I'm going to have to stop here because you're on page 10.
Have I gone past my time?
Yes, it's three minutes.
Okay, I already emailed you the picture. I took the 5 o'clock about violating the garbage. So, please, let me reason for public safety, as we see you're very good at, but I feel very threatened. My neighbors feel threatened. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We have Serena Fish.
I'm here to speak about exactly the same. When you drive the road that goes to the library and on the left-hand side, the city Works Department, employees only, no trespassing. I wish I could sign in our neighborhood that says, "Stop here." It's now expanding to property ownership around the area. There is an owner right on the other side of, can lease his property. cannot lease his property because of the tents. I've spoken before, the same as the lady right before me, that there's a playground, the street, there's a playground on the side of the Mission Mark. There's a school about two blocks away, the bottom of the library. There are kids going and coming there. And the kids, the more annoying to be. At the store under the bridge, had a lady that set up a camp, so she's making her new tents as an expansion. She was extremely aggressive, cursing, yelling. That was her. Now, we finally called the police. She actually the police, and then the gentleman. Had a young lady come in, 20s. Store wanting to sell her gift card. Were so kind to give her so she could and it's in the store wanting to sell us the gift card or could buy stuff, which we don't sell food. We had a young man come into the I watched him. He's in a big backpack on. And these people and they all came to the tent city. The first lady was actually kicked out of the tent city by the tent city residents, so there she was. This young man wanted to phone. Saw him on a phone. So I said, "No." And he started, and I'm like, "No." We had a person on the side of the bed sleeping, moved night. Stan, something has to be done, and I'm finishing, Mayor, because this is now spreading, and it's getting out of hand, and it's way beyond the tent city.
Thank you. Move on to as requested by the Finance Department. Go ahead and call to 6:30. Over to manager Marks.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and to the community. Turn the floor over to Scott Rathbun, our finance director. Repetition, whenever we're talking about city finances. Our fiscal is May 1, 30. This public hearing is right before the next council meeting of April. That the FY25 budget will come exhaustive efforts, and rightfully so. During this, and then prepping council for meetings, several public meetings. We know what the budget is. It's we're very proud to present to council next week for adoption. Our next council meeting in two weeks for adoption. $333,000, one of the largest budgets ever. The largest budget for the city of Bloomington. For the things that are captured, nearly $90 worth of capital projects, about $140,000 budget. We've talked about the reserves that we have unallocated, some allocated future projects. Very exciting and proud to Scott Rathbun.
Thank you, city manager, Lee, and mayor, council, community. I'll be brief this evening, just a recap of some of the totals. This is the fifth view of the budgetary numbers for the year. City code requires that we present March 11, and then we're also required to hold a public hearing